Okay, it's 5:30 so we're going to call to order the August meeting of the Board of Education. And the first item up, pledge of allegiance by Mr. Mike Isbell.
A pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic which stands one nation under God indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Mike. Mission statement will be read by Mr. Butch Ald.
The mission of the Beaufort County Schools team is to enhance the quality of life in our community by nurturing all students and educating them to their fullest potential.
Thank you. Any public comments, Lisa? Okay, no one signed up so we'll go straight to approval of the agenda which is in front of everyone. Does anything need to be changed, added, deleted?
Move approval now.
Okay. Have a motion and a second. All in favor, say aye. Any opposed? Okay, agenda's approved. And that carries us to the approval of the minutes from the, how many meetings do we have here? Several?
Four.
Two meetings but closed sessions and regular. Hopefully you've had time to look over those already.
Move approval.
Okay. We have a motion and a second of approval of the minutes. Any questions or anything? Okay. All in favor, say aye. Any opposed? Okay, minutes are approved. And we will now go into the no action portion of the meeting and a driver's education update.
Yeah, I wanted to, I was hoping I could come to this meeting at late August and give you an idea of exactly where we're going to be, but we don't know yet without, again, the state budget. So, we're moving into the month of September with that uncertainty. We had decided, you all had decided as a board that we would continue on with driver's ed the way we've always done it in terms of charging and stuff through the month of August. What I'd like to ask, and this is a no action item, Joe is here tonight and can answer any questions, but word is that we may have some action at the state level by the 1st of September. And with that in mind, I don't know if that means that the state's going to pay for it, the state's not going to pay for it, the state's going partially to pay for it, we don't know that yet. But before we all can address the issue and make a decision about how much we're going to charge or how much we're going to contribute to the cost of the program, we've got to have a better idea of what the cost is. And the reason why I feel like that may change is that Joe has heard from others and I've talked with some superintendents and the charges are changing because there are fewer students and they have to get more money and different things like that. So what I've asked Joe to do is put together a request to go out for bids and I feel like if we can competitively bid, if we're in the situation of having to make a funding decision, we'll know exactly what the cost is going to be to us. So we're bidding for the services with us providing the cars, the materials and the gas, and we're also bidding with it being a turnkey package with the driving school providing everything so that we're not doing anything other than the general work that Joe does to get everybody set up. That way we'd be able to tell you exactly what it would cost for a family. So right now I don't know if it will be $225 or $350 or $150, I don't know. And because it's such a wide range, I feel like we need to know a little bit more. We don't have our next work session until the 14th of September. I feel like by that time we can have the bid packet go out to get some feedback and then we would know hopefully from the General Assembly if any political action has been taken. So just wanted to give you an update and let you know hopefully when we meet in September, hopefully it'll be resolved at the state level. But if not, then we'll have a firm number that we can share with you what the actual cost will be and then make some decisions. One of the things that I want you to think about, and again, I'm saying this and this may all be null and void after the state makes their decisions. Right now we're able to charge families up to a certain $60 or $65 per family. So the state pays the rest of that. Now that, as of July 1st, they're not paying anything. So we're taking care of that. What Joe normally gets is a count of eighth graders in our county. Those eighth graders include our eighth grade students as well as eighth grade students that attend private schools, we have to include that as well. When the state has picked up the tab, they've paid for that. If we get to a point where we contribute any money for driver's education, I think we need to be aware that some of the students that are taking driver's ed are not Beaufort County students and it would either be incumbent upon their families to pay 100% of the cost or the schools to contribute. And we have no idea what that dollar figure's going to be, I haven't approached any of the schools, but I will be doing that once we determine what our cost is going to be per student. So there's a lot up in the air, I just can't, I can't corral anything to make any decisions until I know what's going on at the state level. And we're not, we're not pushing it off because we don't want to deal with it, we just don't know what the firm numbers are going to be yet. Once we get those, I'll come back to you and we'll try to have some recommendations and a plan at that point. I just wanted to give you an update as we move into late August of where we are. And we're looking at about 600 kids, students per year is what we generally are dealing with.
I have a question, Joe, without revealing my age and yours. There was, there was a time...
He taught me if that makes it even worse.
There was, there was a time that, and I had a lot of people ask me this and I don't have the answer, so I'd like to be able to have the right answer. There was a time when, we call it the book part of driver's ed, was actually taught within the school system. Is that no longer part of any curriculum?
We still teach the book part.
We still teach our teachers or are we paying, are we subbing that out to the driving school?
They have to be certified in driver's education to be able to teach it, so the driving school teacher teaches the book part. We have classes at each high school and several have the head techs throughout the year for students that have after, extracurricular activity after school that they can come take, it's open to anyone. And then they take the driving at their school.
Okay, so our actual staffs are no longer part of the program?
We do not have a driver's ed, certified driver's ed teacher in our staff anymore.
The course is taught after school? Is that right?
After school, Saturday.
Yeah, the law says it can't be done during the instructional day. We're no longer allowed to do it during instructional day.
But we could have a certified teacher, we just don't, or?
I don't know, that's what I'm asking. I mean, I took it after school as well.
The board could provide driver's ed any way they want to, you could hire drivers ed. We have two that work in the county through the driving school. And you could hire your own and have them teach. I don't know what the benefits and stuff, what the difference in price would be. We're paying about $225 per student now to the driving school. And then we provide the car and gas, insurance and things like that.
So we're already funding a great deal of it, we're just getting, up until July 1st, we were getting reimbursed for all the, a portion of it, is that correct?
From the parent charge that we'd have and then from the state giving us the money, paying for the program, but we don't have that state money anymore.
I didn't know if that was even an option or if it would even be an option we'd want to consider, but I've been asked, and mainly it's been people from my generation that remember it being taught by somebody on campus was also, might have been your PE teacher was also, could have been the civics teacher like Mr. Cox.
The state senator, the House is willing to fund driver's ed, they want to keep it. The Senate's gone as far as they're talking about not even requiring it anymore. So just doing away with it. They're pretty far apart.
Right.
They want to move it to the community college in a year or so or something?
That's one of their plans, but they're also saying let's just do away with requiring it and require 40 more hours of driving experience. I'm firm.
Okay. Give them a license and turn them loose.
Carolyn, even if it was done by our certified folks, it could not be done during the instructional day.
Right. Well, even I took it after school, it wasn't, back then it wasn't taught during the school day.
We taught the book part before and after and we did the driving during the instructional day.
You understand, you say we service about 600?
Six hundred.
Is that the number, Joe? About 600?
Last year, eighth graders, we had 570, 80 and then with the private schools and homebound, we're required anybody that lives in our county that's a ninth grader technically is to provide driver's ed for them.
So we're not providing anything at this point in time though, right?
We are, we are.
We are? Are we finishing the kids that started but not starting another session?
We're basically continuing right now, we're, we talked about book parts in this summer, we had driving complete all summer long, July and August. About a third of the school systems aren't ended driver's ed and didn't provide anything. Two-thirds of them are continuing on. We got 600, if you look at Vekliver, if they stop for a month and two months, they may never catch up. I don't know how they would particularly teach them after school, not during the school day, it would be, they'd have to get a lot of personnel in there to provide it. So about a third of them have stopped completely with the program, they're waiting to see what the General Assembly's going to do. Two-thirds of them are going on with the belief that they're not funded, but no one's going to be able to do it.
And there's already, for whatever reason, the kids can't work into our schedule, they can always go out and get private companies to do it and the parents pay for it. That, I mean, we're out of the picture then, so that's always, that's been an option for a while. And my understanding that, so we're the only ones for, that are offering driver's ed, like public, I mean, the charter schools, different schools that they don't?
No.
So then we service, if they have any kids, I'm not saying they do, if they do.
The way I would do it was fund up until July 1st is they would take a count of whether the, didn't matter if the student was private, public or charter, they would take a head count of all the rising ninth graders and then they funded it $195, $200 per student and they send it to the public school in the form of a driver's ed budget.
Got you.
And we were responsible to provide for all the students.
And anything over that, we obviously would either have to pay our parents or if there's some charges.
And that's the general school, I don't know how many ninth graders they have, but wouldn't have enough to teach a full class.
Right. But I mean, but their money came from the state anyway, so it wouldn't matter, I was just saying, for the future, was there anybody out there that could offer it other than us?
Now, during, during the time that we've, we've been picking up the costs, have, have we been picking up costs for private school, homeschool, charter school students during that time?
Well, I don't know, that's a question that came to mind for me last week and I asked Joe about that. And before we get any deeper, that's why I want to have that conversation in September.
So will September start a new session and we have to decide by then if we're going to continue it or not?
I think the first class is, 1st of September, we start teaching the book part.
That's what I thought, okay.
We'll still be driving with two instructors operating six hours a day. They'll turn out about two students per day as they go through the end of Aug, well, end of August, 1st of September. So you could have about 30 or so kids that would take driver's ed. And if the state doesn't fund it, we would have to figure out that.
For those, 30 or so.
Okay.
So by the time we get back, we'll all be past that date, right?
If we wait till the 14th, but we're hoping that the state will pick the tab up, we'll see.
Okay.
We may have to delay, we have to say that we're going to hold off until the 15th or something like that of any coursework.
We want to be back after then. Any other questions or? I think there's so much up in there, it's kind of hard to ask the questions, you know, because I mean, I know you don't have all the answers, so we're just waiting.
Do we need to delay what's going on, what's getting ready to start now until after the 15th?
We could. We have it as a no action item, but if you all wish to go ahead and make that decision, we're not going to meet again until after, well, until the 14th, that's what I was asking.
And he needs a decision for the 14th.
I was here on September 1st.
Mr. Chairman, I'm moved that we suspend the rules and make this an action item so we can act on it.
Here a second on that? Okay. Anybody question that? Okay, all in favor, say aye. Any opposed? Okay, it's just been turned into an action item, that doesn't tell us what action we want to take. So you're saying September the 1st, if we don't change anything, September the 1st, we're going to start up with another and probably won't have the answers yet.
The book part.
Right.
Book part starts, we will continue to drive while that book, book portion goes on. People that have taken the book part in the summer would drive, we'll have one session at each high school which lasts for, it's three hours a day, that'd be 12 hours a week, it would be about two and a half weeks to do the book part. But when the book set, three hour session is up, we would then drive another set of students for three hours.
Okay.
And so we would still have funds going out, driving ed, starting them all.
Okay, so if the board decides to suspend those operations, what? I mean, what's it going to cause, what trouble? I mean, I understand suspending what that's going to do, but is there any ripple effects? I'm not sure.
I think we have to finish driving, we should finish driving the kids that have had the book part, right? Because aren't they then left in the...
If I was to suspend it, I would finish the ones that were driving now.
Right, that's what I mean.
And not start any new ones.
That's right.
Driving session.
Right, let them finish it.
And not start another book.
Until we know what we're dealing with, we'll have a two week window that we do it for sure.
Yeah. And hopefully it won't be with a two or three week window we'll, we'll have some more information on. But at least we won't be making commitments to a whole group without knowing what we have, right?
I don't want us out here sending phone signals.
But we need to finish out the commitments with the kids that are currently driving.
If they're in the car, I would recommend finishing.
Sure, absolutely.
All right. So does everybody understand what he's suggesting or not, I won't say suggesting, but recommending doing? Okay?
We need to make a motion to make it official.
I make a motion, we suspend driver's ed program as far as starting any new classes, but we continue to allow any students that are currently driving to finish their driving part until we have a better answer of what we can do.
Okay. Everybody understand that? Did I hear a second, Barbara? Okay, we have a motion and a second. Any questions real quick?
Does that include students who have not started driving but are scheduled to drive, that have finished the coursework?
No.
If they're in the middle, I think they could go on and drive, you know, if they're already halfway through.
My understanding is if they're in the car driving, we would finish.
That's right, that's right. Or if they finish the book part and they're scheduled to drive, let them go on and drive.
Right.
But let's don't start new.
But don't start any new commitments.
That could get difficult. How many students do you have?
Well, let me ask, let me ask this, at what point do we pay for them doing it? Do we pay at the beginning?
July 1st.
So, 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 well, I guess what I'm, what I'm asking is, have, have we already paid for?
No.
Someone that hasn't started driving yet?
Someone that hasn't started driving yet.
No, we probably paid, doesn't take the book.
The driving school sent in a monthly bill at the end of the month. I will, I have, had them put the phone numbers on it. I spot called several students to make sure they got their $6 in with the different instructors and asked them what they did. And I sign it and turn it in to Ms. Harold, she pays the driving school. So we'll have a bill coming in shortly for August. And they will continue to drive through September and another bill will come in the end of September.
Are we on the hook for those that have taken, are we on the hook for the full amount for those that have taken the book part but have not driven?
We would be on the hook to pay them for the book part.
So is it two se, it's not a total, it's two separate things?
Right, but it's not, but we're not on the hook for the driving part if they haven't started driving?
If they haven't started, no, if they haven't driven or haven't started driving, I would suspend.
Right. How many students are we talking about right now, roughly?
I would have to call the driving school to see exactly how many students they have. We'd normally have around four, $5,000 bill a month.
There was a couple months ahead of that, but yeah.
It's a little bit more in the summer, but you have two driver's ed instructors driving six hours a day or taking the book part. And when they finish a student, we pay for them. So it's based on, I'd have to look at a bill and give it the average about how often, how many they did a month.
I don't want to leave someone that's taken the book part without the ability to drive and finish. I think, I may be wrong, but I think our point is to not start anybody else on the book part that will then also require driving. Let's finish out whoever we, whoever's already taken the book part, I think we ought to finish out. They took it in good faith that we were going to see it through.
Okay, so.
Does that need to be a different motion?
So is the motion okay with you that, okay, go ahead, Joe, I'm sorry.
The biggest criteria, I think, is the birthday. If they're getting close to that 15th, mom and dad, right now, if nothing changes the way it's set up, you have to have your permit for one year before you get your license. So mom and dad want them finished before they're 15. We've got someone that took the book part that's 14, eight months, 14, nine, we can wait a little bit to, before we start driving them.
Right.
Because it's not a, but they're already a week away from the 15th birthday or three weeks, then they're, you'd have more of an opportunity to have phone calls if their child is almost 15 and not driving.
Right.
Okay. All right, the motion as it stands is if you're not in the car, we're suspending the program. Now, do you want to change it to include those that have finished the book part and let them finish the car part?
There's a lot that haven't finished the book part, that have finished the book part and haven't driven yet.
But I feel like they took that course, but with the understanding...
That they would get to finish.
That's right.
And that's, yeah.
That's my point. They had good faith in us and we need to, we need to hold up our end of what the bargain was at the time.
Can I modify my motion?
Yes, you can.
Okay. I'm going to modify my motion to say any, we just suspend driver's ed, any new classes.
Right, so.
And anybody that has taken the class currently will be allowed to finish driving and everything.
Then be finished the whole class.
Can finish and get their, yes.
But don't start anybody any new ones.
And find out what that number and estimate the cost is and give a thought.
What you're saying is if you've begun the process, you get to finish.
Yes. I mean, there's nobody else, there's nobody else in the middle of a written class now or a book class, everybody now, book classes are done, they've just got to drive.
They have 100 in July.
Okay.
You finish them in July.
I agree with Carolyn. This will put a stop to any new classes is what I was...
We just need a clean cut.
And hopefully for a two to three week period.
We need a clean cut so we know when to start back up, you know?
Okay, so everybody understands now what you're saying? Okay.
But that's general understanding.
Yeah, I think so.
My understanding is we're going to drive anyone that has taken the book part and we will not start any new textbook parts, therefore we'll have no driver's ed.
That's right.
That's correct.
Finish up what we have on the books.
That's exactly what books say.
That's right. Okay, so we have a motion and a second to that effect. I'll, I'll be brave and say any more questions? If not, all in favor, say aye. Any opposed? Okay. Thank you, Joe.
Thank you.
And like I said, hopefully it'll be very short and we'll all be over this and doing something different soon. Strategic plan update.
I want to share this with the board and with, with folks that are watching and folks in our community just to be aware. This is, is I hope going to be a, a very important activity that we undertake. And I hope that when we're finished that we haven't created a strategic plan, that we put in a binder and we put on the shelf and we say we've done that, now let's move on to something else. I hope that it'll be a strategic plan that is living and something that we base what we do on. And the reason why I feel so strongly about that is we're, we're reaching out to the entire community, anyone who has a voice, who want them to share with us what their thoughts are. We've sent out invitations to 30 or 40 individuals to serve on a planning committee that will get started. And we're working on four, three dates that we want to, to meet with folks in the Northside area, the Washington area and Southside. And those dates haven't been confirmed yet, we're looking at September 14th, 15th and 16th. And these will be open meetings to the community and invite anybody who would like to come to come. And this is not something that I'm going to direct, I feel like I need to step back, be a part of it, but let someone objectively outside the school system come in to do the work. And this whole notion will be what it is that the community wants our school system to look like. What are we doing well? What do we need to improve on? What are our strategic priorities? What are our non-negotiables? Do we need to change our vision and our mission? And again, with the purpose behind it of what we are going to be doing moving forward. So I just wanted to let you know that that started, our goal was to try to get things kicked off in August, which we've done, and you all will be a part of that. And I'm going to have Eddie West, his retired superintendent, I asked him today if he would come in and just give you some updates from time to time of what's been done. And our goal will be to have this wrapped up before we break for Christmas. So that would be a great thing to be able to present at the December meeting if we can do that. So just wanted to give you that strategic plan update so that you know that we have taken some action and doing some work and you'll be hearing a lot more about it.
Okay, any questions about that, anybody?
Now, those meetings that you're, that you're saying tend to be 14th, 15th, 16th, is that something that we're, will they be board meetings or?
The, the 14th is a work session, we're going to talk about that a little bit later. We'd like to move the work session meeting to Northside and then allow any board members who want to stay to do that. You're all, you're welcome to attend any of those, but they wouldn't be convened as, as a board meeting, it would be more of a community meeting led by that outside individual.
Okay, anything else? Okay, I'll entertain a motion for closed session.
I move that we go into closed session pursuant to General Statute 143-318.11a1 to prevent disclosure of confidential personnel files under General Statute 115c-321 and General Statute 115c-402 and USC 1232G student records.
Here a second.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion, a second, enter the closed session, all in favor, say aye. Any opposed? We'll read the closed session. Okay, we're back out of closed session and the first item up, we need to approve the personnel agenda dated today's date. Do I hear a motion?
Some moves, Chair. And I recuse myself from 4C or 3C, whatever, 3C, excuse me.
I'll second. Okay, and we have a second. All in favor, say aye. Any opposed? Okay, personnel agenda's approved. And September calendar, I think there's, I think I only saw a couple of dates on it so far. Anything, Don?
Adding the 14th, 15th and 16th for those community meetings, but we'll send that out to you, make sure you're aware of that.
Okay.
And the regular meeting is on...
And the 2nd of September is minority hiring, five P M.
2nd of September?
Yes.
That's a Wednesday, right?
When is our work session?
The 14th.
At what time? 4:30. And then the, and then the monthly meeting at 28?
But that, that meeting on the 14th, we've talked about doing at Northside so that we can go from there to the community meeting.
What time are these meetings?
They're at 6 o'clock. And our work session would start at 4:30.
Where will the community meeting be?
At Northside.
Monday at Northside and then the other two we'll go and try to confirm dates.
But you'll get...
Yeah, we'll send something out to you.
Thanks, Lisa.
The Northside meeting will be at 4:30.
Right. Which would be our regular meeting and then we can stay over for the other meeting.
Okay, and when's the monthly meeting?
The 28th. 28th. 5:30.
Okay.
Any board member updates, anything you might like to share?
Just like to wish everybody a first, good day at school tomorrow. I know three that'll be up early.
It's come right up on us quick.
Has to come for you.
And everybody watch out for those kids on the side of the roads, watch out for the buses.
Okay. Anything from the superintendent?
We do, we do start tomorrow, we, I think sometimes lose sight, early college starts early. And they, they started and I went out the first day and it like they'd been in school for a month, they just hit the ground running, do a great job. We hope that all of our other schools start as, as well as the early college has and we're proud of the work that they do and look forward to seeing everybody back tomorrow.
I'd just like to say, remember the family of Richard Potter, a long term, longtime volunteer for the south of the river. I, I call him Mr. Southsides and CPS and everything else. He passed away this weekend unexpectedly and schools over there are just devastated, just devastated. I was talking to my daughter who, he volunteered in her class, three days a week for the last 18 years. And she already had his folder fixed up for him and I'll have to pick up tomorrow, so it's going to be a tough opening for the school. And he was a great person for those of you that knew him just now. In his 50s, I'm not really sure, but he's just, he's just an outstanding person. You couldn't go to a game over there, could you, Butch? He was not there. He ran concessions at, he'd done everything, everything for the school, so.
Just remember his family.
How did the, the game, the first game, I wasn't able to attend, but how did it go? Was it good?
Washington had, had a challenge with Havelock as they always do, so that did not end as they wanted to, but it was a wonderful crowd, a, a big crowd, and they have what they call Little Pack, and so all the little girls that had gone and cheered, they, at halftime they cheer with the, the varsity and JV cheerleaders. So that was really sweet to, to see. But, but even though they did not win, I think they saw what they needed to work on, but more than anything, you saw some boys out there really giving 100%, so that's good. And I think the other two guys won.
Yeah, Southside had a great game, 50 to 0 over North Duplin, so they had a good start.
Northside beat Crest.
And Northside beat Crest. I don't know the score, but.
30 to 12.
They won.
Yeah.
That's what's important.
Okay, any other comments, anybody? Okay.
I make a motion, adjourn.
Have a motion, a second, to adjourn, all in favor, say aye. Thank you very much. Thank you very much.